Okay. So we're out of the executive session and now into the council meeting. And I would like to ask you, if you would, to please stand for the invocation and the Lord God Almighty, we come to another meeting of the citizens and the council. And Lord, we always pray for discernment, that good, solid decisions can be made. Father, as we gather here tonight, once again, may we be mindful of all of the citizens of this community and the ways that the city can function in a way that makes a positive difference in their lives. We ask for your guidance in this meeting and the deliberations and discussion. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If anyone present wants to speak on an agenda item, they need to sign up and present a speaker request form to the city secretary in advance of the item being read into the record by the city secretary. When speakers are called, they are to come to the microphone and begin by stating their name and address for the record. The microphone is right here at the front. Note that public comment periods are for council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after public comments have concluded. Thank you for helping to make this a good meeting. Now for community interest items. Mr. Stewart Cunius.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and welcome to everybody tonight. I'm going to get right into it because we have a lot of activities coming up this weekend. First of all, and this one is Friday, this is October is Family History Month. And to celebrate that, the library will join with the Genealogy Network of Texas for a series of webinars on Friday, this Friday beginning at 10:30 a.m. I think they go on for several hours. I would encourage everybody who's interested in finding out a little bit about their genealogy to come out and check that out. You may find out that you're related to a king, or you may find out that one of your distant ancestors came to Texas completely by coincidence shortly after money went missing from the county treasury in Georgia that he was overseeing.
Yes, yes.
Sure, that was total coincidence. All right, that's Friday. On Saturday, and we've been talking about this for a while, but we're going to have a lot of people in town because the Kerrville River Festival is back, October 16th. We talked about it before. It begins, it actually begins in the morning. We have a beer run, begins at 8:00 a.m., if you can get up that early, a volleyball tournament, exercise classes, and then the actual event, I think the gates open at noon. Musical acts begin at 3:30, and Jared Neiman, who is the scheduled, he's scheduled to perform at 8:00, he's the headliner. So we're expecting quite a few people for that event. We do have fireworks at 9:30. We would encourage everybody with pets to keep that in mind and do what's necessary to make sure that they're not frightened. If you can, you can do that, keep that in mind. Another event that it's, it's not a city event, but it's also going to be going on just across the street here, the 2021 Kerrville Chalk Festival. That's Saturday and Sunday here in Peterson Plaza. The annual two-day event features chalk artists from all over the state and the nation. Always great artwork out there, always a great time. It's also my understanding that, I'm not sure of this, but I was told the Notre Dame Carnival is also this weekend, so. So again, another big activity going on. All right, that's this weekend. Next weekend, because this is before we get back together, the Kerrville Police Department is holding a Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, October 23rd. If you have unused medications, over-the-counter medications that you want to get rid of, we encourage you to come by the Kerrville Police Department on Sidney Baker between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. and turn those in. It's a good way to dispose of those safely, and they'll be happy to take them off your hands. Also next weekend, Parks and Recreation has the Haunted Ghoul Pool, Saturday and Sunday, October 23rd and 24th. We have family tours at 5:00, and then I think some of those gentlemen on there are at the 7:00 p.m., which is the terrifying tour. I'll be taking the 4:00 p.m. tour, which is in daylight and lets me take pictures and not be scared. But I would encourage everybody to come out for that, too. That was a great event two years ago. I don't think we got to hold it last year, but we're glad to have it back this year. And that's it. Going to be a big weekend.
Right. And Mr. Cunius has just been inducted into the Taffey Sports Hall of Fame, so congratulations. All right, council, any items of special interest?
Yes, I need to blow my horn for two of them. Doyle celebrated their open house last Saturday night. We had a wonderful, wonderful crowd. We appreciate everybody who came, and it was just a really good time with good history of what had happened there. And of course, our new building is just the potential for the future, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful potential. So if you haven't seen it, you want to see it, just call the center, give any of us a call. We'll be happy to take you on a tour and show you what is going to be happening over there with our new facility. And then I need to remind you, I don't think Stuart mentioned it, the races out at the airport next Saturday, where if somebody wants to come out and help us park cars, we've still got a couple of spots for that. The gate will open at 8:00. The races will start about somewhere between 11:00 and 12:00. And if you want to come out and see the big rigs or the cabs of the big rigs run and the Jeeps and the Teslas and everything else in between, why, join us out there. It'll be a great day.
All right, good.
I have two, I guess. I also want to congratulate the Doyle community for their new wonderful renovated facility there. And then also, an announcement, kind of, I guess, maybe some citizens already know. Last week, council had the opportunity to attend a TML conference, and I think that was a very successful conference, both we got to learn a lot of new things, and it was also a time for us to get out of our professional sphere here at council meetings and at our workshops and really talk with each other, as well as some staff that was able to join us. So I want to, I think that was very great, and I hope that everything that we were able to accomplish there moves over to our meetings. And thank you to the taxpayers who are able to fund that for us to go and have these conferences and attend these events.
Thank you. Texas Municipal League does some great work. Okay.
I think, Mayor, we should also congratulate the new junior high, KISD. They had their dedication last Sunday afternoon. And if you haven't seen that school, and you do see it, you're going to want to go back. It's just absolutely gorgeous.
That is good.
McDonald's put out a notice that says, "Attention educators, administrators, and school staff. Head to McDonald's now through October 15th during breakfast hours for a free breakfast #ThankYouMeal." And they wanted to thank them all for inspiring and empowering our community, and want to thank them with breakfast.
Good, thank you. All right, at this time, I would like for Ashley Boyle and Stanley Brunsmann, if you would meet me down below, not up on the stage. It's about improvements at the Scott Shriner Golf Course. When I was out there for the 75th Heart of the Hills Golf Tournament, I really heard golfers talking about how good the course is, improvements that have been made, and everything else. And so tonight, we want to recognize Stanley Brunsmann. If you'll raise your hand right here, with the Kerrville Kindness Award. The Kerrville Kindness Program extends its sincerest gratitude to Stanley Brunsmann for his recent donation to the Scott Shriner Golf Course. Mr. Brunsmann contributed $20,000 for improvements to Hole Number One starting area in memoriam to his father, K.K. Brunsmann. Mr. Brunsmann and his father used to play the course every week for 15 years. The municipal golf course became a special place for them to bond and enjoy each other's company. Plaques to honor both Mr. Brunsmann and his father have been placed on two new benches at Hole Number One. Because of Mr. Brunsmann's generosity, future generations of Shriner Golf Course golfers will continue to enjoy the beauty and functionality of the City of Kerrville Municipal Court. And so it is with real appreciation that I present this proclamation. If you would, please just step forward and tell us your name and relationship to the course.
My name is Shane Heffernan. I'm the Sports Facilities Manager for the City of Kerrville, and I help manage the sports complex and the golf course.
I'm Randy Cawthon. I'm the Superintendent of the Golf Course.
Ashley Boyle, Director of Parks and Recreation.
And I'll tell you, that course is a real plus for this community. It is. Thank you very much. Thank you for the difference you made. Now, I would like for the folks that are here with the Nipling-Bushland U.S. Livestock Insects Research Laboratory to come forward. Okay, there you are. This is Kim Lohmeyer, and let me read to you this proclamation. Again, this USDA lab is a great resource for Texas and beyond, but it's great that we've got it right here. The work that they have done over the years is really pretty amazing in regard to the pests that infect and in other way even kill cattle and other animals. But this year marks the 75th anniversary of the USDA Agricultural Research Service, Nipling-Bushland U.S. Livestock Insects Research Laboratory, which was established in 1946. And whereas the past and present researchers and staff at the laboratory have worked tirelessly to protect the United States cattle industry from anthropoid pests and the diseases they transmit. And whereas the laboratory has provided invaluable expertise and research that led to the development of the sterile insect technique and eradication of the New World Screwworm from the United States. And whereas, the laboratory has developed critical tools for the management of biting flies that impact livestock, as well as novel control strategies for the management of ticks on cattle and wildlife in support of the cattle fever tick eradication program. And whereas, sincere gratitude is extended to the Nipling-Bushland U.S. Livestock Insects Research Laboratory and the dedicated individuals there that have given their time and efforts over the last 75 years to conduct cutting-edge research that benefits the cattle producers of Kerr County, the state of Texas, and the United States. And now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, to hereby proclaim 2021 as the 75th anniversary of the USDA Agricultural Research Service, Nipling-Bushland U.S. Livestock Insect Laboratory in Kerrville, Texas, and encourage all citizens to join me in celebrating the history and success of the laboratory. And we have some people here tonight who have been in the cattle business and know the value of the work of this laboratory, and it's just a real plus. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You should have turned in in advance to the city secretary a request to speak, and I'm going to ask Ms. McLeanon if anyone has signed up to speak.
Yes, sir. We have 12 citizen speakers tonight.
All right. Let me explain. No discussion may take place and no action may be taken since items are not posted on the council discuss, not posted, the council discuss subjects raised, but may later refer questions to staff or follow-up or place an issue on a future agenda item. You have four minutes to speak, and if you will come to the microphone when your name is called and present your comments.
Tim G.
My name is Tim G. I'm at 331 Stone Ridge Drive in Kerrville. I'm here to speak about the Brinkman property and the development that's planned. Having moved here in May, I am well aware of the need for housing inventory in the Kerrville area. It's a beautiful community, a growing city, low unemployment. I think that it'll be a very successful development. That the concern that we have in our community, which is the neighborhoods right adjacent to that property, is that it's a challenging piece of property with a number of issues. And my concern is that we have an appropriate level of research and studies and do appropriate mitigation for all the factors that are involved. And there's some other speakers this evening that we'll be getting into more detail with that. So we look forward to working with the planning department as well as the city council as this moves forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leon Miller.
I'm Leon Miller, and I, like the gentleman just ahead of me, have some strong thoughts and feelings about the conditions that this particular plan is being brought in under as we have watched and observed it. And we think it's, there are many good locations in this community, many good. This is not a good one because they would have to come out on our main drive or highway, which is Camp Meeting Road. And I actually own the property on 16 and Camp Meeting Road, right there where the big old windmill is and the two lakes or ponds with the swans on them. And it's been, it's been a blessing to be a part of and develop this 27 years ago, and we're still, we're still enjoying it very much. But we don't, we have too much traffic now, as it is, because we've got 60 some odd different homeowners that are participating in our River Hills group. And it's, it's just not feasible, it's not practical, doesn't make good sense, good business sense, to build and use that road as a coming or going in and leaving now using Camp Meeting Road. It's not, it's not, that's not an acceptable situation as far as we're concerned. So that's, that's basically what I have to say. We just, we welcome, we welcome the people. If they build across the highway for, across the river, the creek, River Hills, River Hills Creek, and stay on that side of the highway, it'd be perfect, and then enter and exit on, out of, off of 16. And that's, that's cutting it down. I've got about 15, 20 minutes, but I'm going to try to hold it to the four, the four minutes that we're entitled to. So anyway, it's, it's something that we know quite a bit about. We've done quite a bit of our homework already on it. And it's the story right now, like it is throughout much of Kerrville, is traffic, traffic, traffic. We have a lot of traffic using that road that go over in various places that we have for years and years. So just, just know that we're, we're not opposed to the concept, but just don't use as an entry or an exit our main street. And it's just, it's, it's just the way it is. It's not, it's not good business. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Humberto Garcia.
My name is Humberto Garcia. I live on 260 Loma Vuelta in the same Kerrville Hills Ranch Estates. I'm here to discuss basically that there is not enough exits for the community that we already have there, which is Kerrville Hills Ranch Estates. And right behind us, you have Ridge Stone, another neighborhood, and the only way in and out is through Camp Meeting Road. It's not like River Hills that has four exits. There is also a church right there in the beginning. We've looked at the Brink's new proposed housing, which has about 138 homes and apartment complexes and also five-acre lots, which will add up to about 566 vehicles coming in and out of there. I don't think that we have the amount of room for that much traffic. And I mean, 16 is already dangerous as it is. That's all I'd like to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob Ward.
My name is Robert Ward, and Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'm also part of the group here about the Brink's Crossing thing. I'm a physician. I've been practicing medicine here since 1999. I'm going to try to focus on what we see as health and safety issues related to the project. First of all, I'd like to mention that in 2018, the city developed a best use plan, the Planning and Zoning Department did, and it looked, it looked very good to us. It looked like it was zoned very nicely, and I'm sure it was a bit of an expense and time to develop that best use plan. We were surprised to learn when they were developing this new development that it had been changed suddenly in 2019, but we knew nothing about that, although there's no requirement to let us know. We were curious as to why the city would go to the time and expense to develop a best use plan, which we thought was excellent, and then suddenly change it in one year. Didn't seem to be in concert at all with the best use plan, which wanted to fit the type of homes adjacent to each other in a similar manner. This is obviously a bit of a difference, and we're just concerned about why that happened. Flooding in that area, not sure if you're totally aware of the topography of that area, but if you look even on Realtor.com, they have new ways of computing flood risks now because of climate change. And at the very end of the hairpin turn where these houses are supposed to be built, they now evaluate that area at extreme risk for flooding and almost 100% risk for it. These are starter homes, people putting their money into that. I think that presents a great risk to them. Both, it's a public health issue. Also, the hairpin turn that's there in their development would be extremely difficult for a fire truck to navigate, and given the densities, homes so close to each other, I think it presents a real fire hazard to the community. Fire truck can't get through there, and there's limited access, which has already been mentioned. You could [inaudible 00:05:27]. We're concerned about flooding and overflow, and also about just the general amount of increased sewage that the water system will have to endure. There's been links to Parkinson's disease from elevated levels of E. coli and other bacteria, which I believe we've been cited for here a couple of times. Kerr County remains one of the highest counties in the state of Texas for incidence of Parkinson's disease. CDC had us listed as number two out of all the counties in the state of Texas. They revised their numbers in 2019, and we came out number three. This is a concern to me as a physician, why this keeps happening. I think we need to have somebody evaluate the effects of the runoff and the disposition of the water supply after that. In addition to this, there's a lot of wildlife in that area. We don't know about any wildlife mitigation, what will happen to that wildlife, if they'll just be killed off or set elsewhere. But again, that risks the water supply if these animals are just forced off and left to die. Also, animals that are forced out by urban renewal, sometimes forces the animals to cross highways, and this is being built on a highway, it presents a general danger to the public. There's also retention ponds to deal with the supposed overflow. This creates mosquito problems, which I don't know if that's been addressed. West Nile virus is becoming more and more endemic in the state of Texas, and that is not a disease anybody wants. Our overall goal is to just make this safe. We're not trying to block anything. We know that property does get developed, but we're concerned about the density. They're forcing these houses in just as close as they possibly can to one another, and already asking the fire department for a variance to make this hairpin turn even more narrow. I really do think that it could be a problem. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Warline.
Mayor Blackburn, council members, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. And I'd like to kind of summarize what our biggest concerns are. Our biggest concern is that we would like to see the primary road, the road going into the property of this development, and the secondary road, the Camp Meeting Road. They could allow a much wider road if they built their road on their development. The main reason for that is that in the number of houses in Kerrville Ranch Estates are, and Stone Ridge, it's about 100 houses. So imagine 350 and 100 trying to get out Camp Meeting Road. It would be backed up forever in the midst of an emergency. And if there, if there were a fire, that would be what would be happening. So some of the people that are living way up on Stone Ridge, the second thing is, the water pressure already on Stone Ridge is not good. There are days that it goes down to a drip. And so they want to be assured that the water pressure is going to be okay for them when you add all these additional homes. Earlier today, you were emailed a letter from Kerrville Hill Ranch Estates, and if you have received that, could you, oh, you can't answer me. Okay. You were sent by email a letter. And in that letter, it was requested that we be put on an agenda item for the next council meeting, and we would appreciate that. I also have a petition signed by many of our residents that express our concerns more fully. The letter expresses our concerns more fully, and if it's allowable, I'd like to leave that with the secretary.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
William Rector.
Bill Rector, Setmore 5 Water Street. And I'm here tonight really to just tell you what a wonderful job you're doing in a very, very difficult job, as you'll hear from the, have heard from the previous speakers. Your decisions are not easy, but the decisions that you have done have been phenomenal for this community. We have a community that is extremely better than it was five or six years ago. This council has done a remarkable job, and I want to thank each of you for the hard work that you do, and thank you for coming to these council meetings and working as hard as you do. And incidentally, before I stop, I'd like to just mention that our legislature, supported by our representative Andy Mur and Don Buckingham, passed SB 1090 in the last legislative session. And that allows us to look at improving the night sky in Kerrville. And we can start with that. And we can start with that by passing a resolution of intent to become a dark sky community. We would, when we do that, we would join Fredericksburg, we would enjoy, we would join Dripping Springs, and we would join Enchanted Rock and who have already become IDA certified communities. This would be the first step at moving towards certification is passing that resolution. And we would like to ask each of you to consider doing that at future meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie McGee?
Good evening. My name's Maggie McGee, and I live at 2729 Indian Wells Drive in Kerrville. I'm here for the same reason that Bill Rector is here, and that's to thank you for the work that you've done on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville. In the past four, five, six years, there's been a dramatic upturn in both the quality of life, the congeniality and civility of our public dialogue at these meetings, and the leadership that has been shown, particularly during COVID, one of the most difficult periods in our history, in our country's history. It has been amazing to me to watch the leadership that the city staff, the city council, and all the boards and commissions have given during this very difficult period. I say this because I've been lucky enough to be on, to serve on one of the boards. This will be my fourth and last year, and it's been a privilege and a blessing. Most of all, I want to say to people that have questions to the city, this slogan, your voice, your city, we mean it. We want to hear from you. That's why we have citizens forums. That's why we have a myriad of boards and committees and task forces, and people are encouraged to get involved and to help and to make their feelings known. I would urge everyone that has a question about the way the city conducts its business to get involved and learn more about it. I can tell you from serving on the EIC board, these decisions are not easy. These are very complex problems. If it's infrastructure, if it's construction. Look at this building. This was one of the projects that was done. The Doyle Center, the school, the Legion lift station, you know, it goes on and on, and they're complex. And they don't lend themselves well to sound bites. It takes a lot of hard work and dedication. And I would just urge everybody to get involved because it's very, very exciting where we're headed in this city. And I want to thank all of you up there for being a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Martin?
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Greg Martin. I live at 126 Oak Crest Way in Kerrville, town on Harper Road, and it's a delightful place. In fact, Kerrville is a delightful place. My wife and I moved here about three years ago. We chose Kerrville. You may not have chosen us, but we chose you. I would also say that I'm here to follow up on the remarks of Dr. Rector for the Friends of the Night Sky. One of the attractions of Kerrville is the rural nature, and one of the attractions of such a environment is the ability to enjoy the stars and the night sky and just the, the clear skies that we see, whether it's day or night. In particular, a couple of weeks ago, I was at the city council meeting, and we talked about a proclamation which was delivered for October to be Night Sky Month. We have noted that Fredericksburg has moved ahead with an ordinance for regulating the kinds of lighting that can be done proactively or prospectively, not retroactively. What we're asking is, is for awareness from the council that there is opportunities here for betterment of the life in Kerrville, for betterment of the environment here in Kerrville. And I don't mean environment in terms of so much of what we hear these days about EPA or things like that, but just the living conditions. And if we can do a better job of, of putting lights in and around Kerrville that fulfill the function they're supposed to, which is to light the area without unnecessary lighting, which endangers the ability to see the night sky. That's what we're asking as Friends of the Night Sky. It's, it's pretty simple, and it's easier if we do it now rather than later. And we just ask for the awareness, you'll be seeing us around from time to time, ask for the awareness from the council to get behind the idea, which is, as Dr. Rector mentioned in the bill 1090, that our representatives have already sponsored the idea that the cities can regulate, if they choose to, the development of lighting within the confines of the city. So we ask for your support in that, and at this time, that's all we're asking for. And I would also add, congratulations on a great city. We are enjoying this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kathleen Brinkman?
My name is Kathleen Brinkman. I'm at 444 Sidney Baker South in Kerrville. I'll be the last one probably to echo the dark sky. I'm also a member of this group, and I just wanted to ask the council, as the others have, to please be aware of this issue. This is an incredible resource as well for Kerrville, and Fredericksburg is already taking steps to highlight their status as a dark sky compliant community. They're using it for advertising purposes, to bring in tourists, and they're already targeting the 2024 eclipse that is going to bring a tremendous amount of visibility to this entire area. It's going to be a great, while that's going to be a solar eclipse, it's also going to be a fabulous opportunity to the extent that we can take action and enhance our night skies here in Kerrville to demonstrate to the astronomer community that we also have the dark skies that they want to see. I know the council has received an invitation from the Ubar U Ranch to come and, and see the facility out there, and I would really encourage you either as a group or individually to think about coming out some evening on a moonless night. It is a spectacular facility, and it's worthy of protection, and we need to protect it. The glow from Kerrville is ever increasing, and it's really vital that we do what we can. There's an amazing facility that they put out there with a retractable roof, incredible powerful telescopes. I got to see the rings of Saturn. I got to see nebula. I got to see dying stars. I got to see stars that are being created. It is really an amazing experience. They bring a tremendous number of young people from all over Texas to have this experience, and we need to do what we can to protect that. We also need to protect the Milky Way because I was out on a friend's ranch not far out of Kerrville, and we can still look up and see the Milky Way in some places at night, and we don't want to lose that. So I'm here to ask you to protect that resource for all of us and for Kerrville.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nikki Caines?
Nikki Caines, 1809 Mountain Laurel. I believe at the last council meeting, there was a recommendation that I really came to appreciate it. I believe Councilwoman Garcia made a recommendation that all speakers who come to the mic do not have to give their home address for privacy and invasion purposes. And I would like to see that happen. Maybe the recommendation could be that you state your name and say whether you live or have a business in the city instead of giving out our home address. My second comment is, I'm, as part of the public, I'm still waiting to hear what you might be working on and the progress you are hopefully making for the public safety facility. The election will be in May, and I know that's a lot of work for you to do, but we've not heard anything, so I'm just asking that you keep us in the loop. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Harrison?
John Harrison, 2911 Dry Hollow here in Kerrville. Isn't this a beautiful venue? My wife and I just love to come listen to music here. We've been coming since it first opened. Now, Stuart, wherever he is, he failed to tell you all that Thursday night, there's a Metallica cover band playing here, and I expect to see all of you there. So you've got to support your community. It's just Metallica, come on. Last week, I was watching a video replay of the EIC meeting, and it got to thinking about all of the people in our community that serve on boards and volunteer their time. It's the Planning and Zoning Board, the EIC, the Parks and Rec Board. We've got hundreds, if not thousands, of people in our community serving on, on city boards as well as other non-governmental boards, and they do it why? They do it because they're trying to make our city a great place to live. And by gosh, they've been doing a good job in the last few years. Now, it's just not those individuals. We've got great businesses in here, and I'm not going to name them all, but HEB, Pint and Plow, you go down, Mama Cedars, you go down the list. Name all of and man, they just step up to the plate whenever there's a need. So they, along with individuals that step up and businesses and charitable organizations, make this a great place to live. So how does this all happen? It doesn't just happen because it happens, and it doesn't happen just because of you all. In my mind, it happens because many people, not all, but many people can put their personal interests, whether political or business, aside for a while and spend their time, their effort, and even their money, working in a collegial manner to make our community a better place to live. And that's what's been happening in this community. It's as simple as that, as that. They want to give back to the community. So I'm here tonight not to thank you. I want here tonight to thank the volunteers that serve on the boards, the businesses, and the charitable organizations that make this place a great place to live. Thank you very much.
You meant to say, you meant to say Buzz's Barbecue, didn't you?
Glenn Andrew?
My name is Glenn Andrew, 3553 Lacumbre in Kerrville. Council and city staff, thank you for affording me the opportunity to share my thoughts with you this afternoon. As a concerned and involved citizen of Kerrville, I watch almost all of the council meetings, even when I'm out of the state. As I shared in my recent letter to the editor, I have serious concerns regarding the recently exhibited rude, unprofessional, and gotcha behaviors. Such behaviors are detrimental to the operation and the perception by outside of our city. Let me say to the super majority of the council, who have been subjected to these unwarranted and grossly unfair attacks, you were elected by significant majorities, and you are executing your duties in a professional and insightful manner. This is just as we knew you would when we elected you. Well done. Well done. When I hear your integrity and character impugned, I am appalled and even angered. I know each of you, and your personal integrity and behaviors are beyond reproach. They are beyond questioning by anyone. We can disagree with some of your decisions and do. However, the differences in opinions must be addressed in a civil and respectful manner, not wrapped in personal attacks nor false tirades. I may disagree with the decision, but I respect your insight and the diligence you make in every decision, and I will always support you. For all that you have endured and all the attacks, I, as a Kerrville citizen, apologize for those. The super majority of the council has exhibited behaviors and decisions which are characterized by these words: respect, honesty, integrity, professionalism, insightfulness, transparency, and well-studied. Thank you, thank you, and thank you again. This council has made numerous decisions to move the city forward, such as attracting good-paying, job-laden companies, revitalized the Doyle Center with other organizations, extended the River Trail to Shriner, and validated a new source of water found in the Ellenberger Formation. Each of these accomplishments and many, many more have been achieved without raising the tax rate. Thank you, and thank you again. This is who you have over the last four years: continue the exceptional collegiality among the four of you. Please continue to move our city forward, caring for the citizens' needs and wants in a conservative financial manner. As much as possible, ignore the disrespectful attacks and behaviors. The four of you in city council have always, the city staff have always taken the high road and led us well. Let's stay that course. So I conclude by simply saying, thanks.
Kerrville is to say that Fredericksburg is already doing it. You may remember that when Kinky Friedman ran for justice of peace in, in 1986, that his first plank, plank of his first, first plank of his platform was to keep Kerrville out of war with Fredericksburg. So anyway, one, one other thing. The Public Safety Complex continues to come up. I just want to say this. When the petition effort, which was a part of democracy, stopped the certificates of obligation, we were very close to a place for the Public Safety Complex. That place is now on the market, and so for us to move forward with a bond election, we've got to have a place and a building plan and everything else, and that may take a long time. So that's, that's why you may not be hearing much for a while. All right.
And Mayor, I'd like to do a couple of things too. A statement of fact on, on that as well about the Public Safety Complex. A citizen that spoke asked for an update that is scheduled for later this month. It's subject to change, but right now it's scheduled for a workshop, probably on the 26th of this month. So stay tuned for that, but again, it's subject to change. Another thing I'd like to do while we're at it and while the topic's fresh on our minds, and as we're permitted to do at this time, there were a couple of things that brought up, that were brought up by citizens that I'd like to see if council would like to put on a future agenda. One is I'd like us to have some information on the dark sky and look at possibly adopting a dark sky resolution.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we come now to the consent agenda, which we're the
Sorry, excuse me, Mayor. I was trying to see if we had support for that.
We have items for future agendas.
We can do that right now, too.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that then. Okay.
No, I'm sorry.
We'll do it on future agenda.
Okay. Okay. Then I'll bring up one more then.
The, at this time, we come to the consent agenda and ask if there are any items to be pulled by council or individuals. Okay? If not, do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right. Okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, let me know by the raised hands. Okay, and it passes unanimously. All right. Now, we come to the end of the consent agenda, and we move into a public hearing. I gavel that a little bit early, but Mrs. McLean, would you read it in, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2021-27, an ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas. Such chapter more commonly known as the City's zoning code. By changing the zoning of a .71 acre property currently addressed as 1473 State Highway 1 as 1473 State Highway 173, Banderah Highway, Consisting of Part of Lot 1 of the Overlook Hill Subdivision Within the City of Kerrville, Carr County, Texas, From Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District C1 To a Single Family Residential Zoning District R1, And Providing Other Matters Relating to the Subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Right, okay. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is a zone change for a portion of Lot 1 from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to R1. Here's just a couple photographs of the property. So this is actually the back portion of the property that's the hillside behind what's going to be the future commercial development. The result will be this kind of bowtie shape will go back to R1 as it was before, leaving the two lots up front for commercial development under the C1 zoning district. Here's what that future plot will look like. This case went before the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 2nd and was approved with unanimous vote. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right, thank you. Counsel, any questions on this one?
Can you clarify, when you look at that, I think it's that image that you have up there, and the one right before that that you showed, this property that's subject to change is the one outlined in red on that picture?
That is correct.
And then on the second, I'm just curious, on the second picture, it's a bigger piece of property?
This map is based off the actual plotted Lot 1.
Okay.
They are only rezoning a portion of Lot 1.
Can you say that again?
They're only rezoning this portion of Lot 1.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Public hearing is open on this. If we have any speakers? All right. If not, at 6:55, we close the public hearing. Counsel, any further questions? Do you have a motion on this matter?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2021-27 on first reading.
All right. Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second. All right, all in favor, if you'd like it to be known by the raised hands. Thank you, and it passes unanimously. Now, come to ordinances, second reading, 6A, Ms. McLeannan?
Ordinance number 2021-26, second reading, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4 Boards and Commissions, Section 2.2-91 Senior Service Advisory Committee of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, By decreasing the membership of this committee to nine members and providing other matters relating to the subject. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Okay, since this is second reading, there's no staff presentation. Counsel, do you have any questions on this matter? All right, if not, is there a motion?
Kim, do you have something you need to say?
I do not, I was just going to say second reading. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2021-26 on second reading.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion second. All in favor, raise a hand. Okay, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. 7A, Ms. McLeannan?
Master Project Agreement with Core and Main LP To Provide Neptune Materials and Installation For Phase 2 of the AMI Project Not to Exceed $275,000. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, Ms. Barrett, explain this one to us.
Okay, good evening. So you've seen this before. Before we kind of come to what our ask is, I just want to give you a quick update of where we are with our project currently. So we've talked about our advanced metering infrastructure project several times, which basically is creating two-way communication between our meters and our office. So really reducing a lot of read time. We're being able to actually see data in the office rather than actually driving to the meter to gather that information like we were before. We have alerts for high flow, a quicker leak detection, and the hope is an overall reduction in water loss once we get everything implemented in all three phases. So the biggest thing, or one of the largest things for me, is our ability to respond to customers quicker, which is what I've, you know, come back to, and that is kind of our end user and who we want to serve the most. So, and it does support our Kerrville 2050 Plan in several different ways. So just to give you a quick look here, some of you have seen this before as we've done prior presentations, but the box here on my left, the little small box, believe it or not, is what we call a data collector. So that's the box from the outside. The box on the inside is just kind of the brains, and believe it or not, that is the piece of equipment that gathers all the data that then sends it to the office. So it's pretty intuitive. Up on the top of the water tower, this is the water tower at Holdsworth. So right on the, if you're looking behind, from behind the stadium on the right-hand side, that water tower, that's where that antenna is, and it's about 125 feet or so in the air. So right now, what we're focused on is Phase 1. We've wrapped that up, got all the installation done. It is completely online for that phase, and we're looking at going into Phase 2. So this particular phase that we just finished has 2,400 customers, give or take. When we checked this last week, we're reading at about 88% through AMI. So just to let you know, our meter technicians have changed out 2,300 antennas, 2,300 lids, and multiple boxes throughout the city to make this work. We've talked about this phased-end approach, which is what we really wanted to do to be able to allow our city staff to be able to install the infrastructure. And doing everything from our side has allowed us to do it in three phases instead of hiring an outside company to come in and do it all at once. So you can see, and this is an estimated savings on just the installation of about $83,000. And just so you know, some of you guys might not know these guys standing by the truck, but I made them take this picture, they weren't super happy with me about it. But Tony is our meter tech supervisor there in the middle, Justin, and then Dwayne, and they have done every single piece of this work for Phase 1. So I really want to recognize them for that work.
Can I ask you a question real quick? Just, why is it that there'll be meters right next to each other? One of them has a blue, and one of them does not. Does it read both meters from one?
No. So most of the time, when you're seeing a blue lid, you're seeing potable water, drinking water, and a green lid is going to indicate irrigation. So as we're changing out and adding new lids, most of the lids that fit these new antennas that are for potable water are blue, and then the green ones are for irrigation. So as we're changing out and going to new lids, that's the way manufacturers are making them now. So for a multitude of reasons, visibility mostly, and being able to identify the difference in what kind of line we're looking at.
Okay.
No difference in compatibility or anything like that. But that's a good question, and we have gotten that quite a bit lately, so.
All right, thank you.
Some people love them, some people don't. But that's, that's the way they're coming right now, and, and just, you know, to be able to identify the differences in those type of lines.
Thank you.
Sure. So again, we talked about 2,150 meters, give or take, and this is last week's data when I pulled this, that were being read by AMI. So for example, cycle 2 typically took about six hours to read prior to this. Now we're in one or less in reading meters. The rest of them are coming in directly to the office. And you can see on the little map, the area in purple is the area that I'm talking about. So everything kind of centrally located there. The Holdsworth arrow up at the top, that's where the tower is. And then the bottom arrow there, that's Main Street, just to give you an idea of kind of where we're looking. So the hope is, right now, we've, we're figuring we saved about 60 hours a year just in this one particular cycle, and that's simply driving around in reading meters. So a lot of time that we'll be able to use on more proactive maintenance and those kind of things. So most of you have probably seen a data log, if you've lived in the city very long and called and said, hey, why is my water bill high? And I want to see my usage and those kind of things. So every time we do a data log, we have to send a truck out. So at least one trip, most of the time, two trips. So by getting the information in the office, you can imagine how much time and energy that's going to save. So we're figuring when we get everything installed, we're going to save over 400 hours a year just doing data logs. Not to mention, we can give that to the customer right then.
So when we were at TML last week, went to actually a presentation about cities that were doing good things, proactive things, and that was actually what one city was talking about, their AMI system. And I had a, there were a few things I asked, and I asked EA one of them, but the, the data that you're talking about, the real-time data, on one of the presentation slides, they were showing how customers can access their own real-time information. So is that available through our system?
Right, now it isn't because we only have this one phase online, so it wouldn't be cost-effective for us to implement that right now. It's very expensive. There's multiple different softwares out there that will bring that capability to the customer. And I know we've talked about that, you know, throughout the last couple of years, just as we've done presentations, but we are looking at that moving forward. And I've talked to actually Public Works a little bit about that and what that might look like, well, once we have all three phases onboard.
So let's get the phasing done. It's not, it's not a built-in part of...
Right, it's not a built-in part of this, but it is a capability of what we already are moving toward. So it's definitely something we can add in the future. But we're, you know, still at, you know, less than 25% of our, we're all customers. So when we install a software like that, we're paying for, it's a one, you know, charge per meter, so there's not a breakdown of, well, you're only using this many, so we can pay for it in pieces. So we are definitely looking at that from the customer side, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got one more question while we're asking questions here. How does this alert you to an unusual use of water?
I'm going to show you in just a second, an actual screenshot from that, so you'll be able to see what it does.
All right, yeah, I'm, I'm, I've got a personal reason.
Okay.
Earlier this year, I left my water hose running in the front yard. Forgot about it. It watered essentially my next-door neighbor's yard.
We see that often.
Now, if I turn the water on, I immediately turn a timer on to remind me. But would that show up in terms of where you could alert the customer?
It does. So right now, the only time we're able to see that, if you're not being read by AMI, is when we go out to do another reading or we notice water running down the street, which happens too. So we're oftentimes a month behind. So if you left it on for a month and you were out of town, there wouldn't be a way for us to know. And so through our software, it actually has continuous flow alerts that'll actually alert us to go and look at specific accounts that say this account doesn't usually run like this. You need to go check it out. So we, it's an alert system built into our software. And we have that capability now and have been using it already.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Sure. So this, actually, since we're, just give you a couple little slides here on what this software looks like, this is an example. So this is an internal account. This is just like a first screenshot, I guess, if we logged into this account. This is a monthly consumption, so just looking at it by month. So if I were to click on the month that I have highlighted there, this gives me that month by day. So you can see consumption by day of how many gallons you're using each day, and specifically, if I see that high day and I want to take a look at what's going on on that day, there's that day. And so I can tell you by hour exactly when your water hose was on. And so, you know, if it's an irrigation link, it's going to look a little bit different than it is if it's a continuous flow kind of situation. But our girls in the office and our guys know what they're looking for and can take a look and be able to help a customer through this. So we think this is really handy for us. It gives us information kind of at our fingertips if we're having a problem that we need to look into for a customer whose bill is high, for example, and we can look at while you're standing there in the office with us or while you're on the phone. So really, really good tool. This is the same exact information, just in Excel. It exports that, shows us a map, so we can actually look at where the location is that we're looking at from the office. This is, I think, what you, a little bit of what you were asking. So this shows our top 10 accounts by consumption, and I've blacked out what those accounts are for obvious reasons. But, you know, what I would be looking at here is, these are my top 10 accounts by consumption. What are these accounts? And if I were to see a residential account in this top 10, I would be concerned. So we're looking for anything abnormal. Then here's the other screen I was telling you about. So this tells me how many reads I'm getting for an AMI. The not received, obviously, those are still our old reads, the ones that we're driving. Once we're onboard, then that number will grow, and the not received will decrease. So this gives you, you can see the critical consumption there that has continuous flow. So we can look at that, and it'll actually bring up those accounts. It says, hey, these guys are running all the time. You need to be concerned about that, and we go look at that continuous flow. So same thing, it kind of tells if something's wrong with our gateway, which is our data collector, or if we have any reverse flow going on. So just a lot of different information that we can monitor our system from the office and not have to wait a month at a time to be able to find problems, so. So again, we have a three-phase approach. We're wrapping up fiscal year '21s. I don't know why I didn't put the current coverage percentage in there. That was a reminder for me. We're currently at 88%. So that is higher than we expected going into this phase, just with the unknown and trying to work through all the little bugs. For fiscal year '22, we have $275,000 budgeted in the capital improvements project budget. That's approximately 4,500 customers. This time, be installing two data collectors, but we won't have the software expense, so more equipment, but less software. And we're, you know, expecting that 85% to 90% coverage, but again, we just won't know until we get that, get the install going and start seeing how those roll in. So what we're asking for today is just your permission for our city manager to enter into an agreement again with Core and Main, who's the same provider that we used last time. They are a sole-source distributor for the products that we use. They will coordinate the installation of the data collectors themselves, and then our staff will do the rest of the installation.
Mr. Hoppe, any further comments?
We're just excited to continue this program. We think it's a great service to our citizens and certainly puts data in people's hands, and that is powerful.
Okay, all right. And I assume this will help us in some water conservation, what I mentioned, but in other ways as well.
And that is one of our key water supply strategies, is conservation. And again, this helps citizens be able to conserve precious resources.
All right, okay.
Hey Julie, what areas, what parts of town can expect to see this change out in the next year?
So we're looking at a data collector in the Methodist Encampment area. So there's a tank way up at the top. And then the other site, we actually have a site visit with the installers next week, I believe, and we're looking at two sites, which will either be the site at College Cove, which probably most people don't know is there, but it's kind of behind the Singing Wind Park and way up on the hill where four-wheel drive is only accessible, which is a really high point. We would expect a lot of coverage, or potentially summit. So we're going to kind of kick those two around with the, with the installers and see what's going to be more feasible for them to make sure we can use the existing infrastructure, because that's always our goal. If we don't have to set a pole, then that saves us a lot of money, if we can use something that's already there.
And what about this 80% to 90%, 88%, you're talking about these percentages? Can you tell me what, is that, do some of them, are there, are there places that just won't take that read?
Yeah, there's going to be places, just because of our geography, they're just not going to read. So we have made some moves to change out what we call a register, or actually, when you look at your water meter, where your dials are, you know, your, your electronic dials. That piece, they do have a new version that's upgraded this past year. And so when we see problem areas, we've been changing those out to the newer version, which have a higher capability of reading radio frequency and cell frequency further. We've seen a lot of success with that. So as we finish a project potentially under budget, we would be using additional funds to do some of those changeouts, hopefully bringing that percentage up. But there's going to be areas that they just won't. You know, it's kind of like a cellphone, because it does run off of a cellphone SIM card, basically, that talks to each of those registers within the meter. So it's a guess that we do a propagation study, which kind of tells us elevation, cellphone reception, those kind of things that should give us a pretty good indicator of what that percentage would be. But percentage-wise, what I'm specifically talking about is percentage of the number of customers in that area that we should be able to read by AMI if everything goes according to plan.
Okay, counsel, do you have other questions? All right, do we have any speakers to sign up?
No, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Julie.
Do I hear a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute an agreement with Core and Main.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion second. All in favor, the upraised hands. Passes unanimously. 7B, Ms. McLeannan?
Resolution number 45-2021, A resolution authorizing the submission of an application for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP DR-4586, to the Texas Division of Emergency Management, and authorizing the mayor and city manager to act as the city's executive officers and authorized representatives in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in this program. The grant will be used for installation of emergency power generators at various city facilities, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, okay. Mr. Barrett?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here tonight to ask for authorization for a resolution
I'm here tonight to ask for authorization for a resolution to apply for a hazardous mitigation grant. I'll get it out here in just a minute. It's actually a grant that's been mandated by the, well, the grant is not. The need for the grant was developed or set out by the Senate Bill 3 back in June by the state of Texas. They did a state mandate that said that water systems have to maintain operation for a period of 24 hours without power. And there was also some other requirements in that grant, that's the main focus of it. They didn't give any money or any funding for it, so this would be something we would use this grant for. It would also help us do some of the other updates. Funding for that particular mandate is the main one with the water system, however. So the application mitigation grant was actually funds from FEMA, and it's administered by the Texas Department on Emergency Management. They funded $37 million for this project, but there's a catch there, the local municipalities or the local people have to do a matching fund of 25%. So that would be what we would have to ante up for our portion of it. Why is this significant, or how did this grant, Senate Bill 3, really happen? It was a result of the winter storm. Here in Kerrville, we did have about, it's hard to estimate, but I would say about two-thirds of people were out of water, depending on the duration and the time, some of them longer than others, obviously. But we did have some significant water outages. We didn't have to do a boil water notice. We are amongst many in the state that did that, hence the state has mandated us, cities, Kerrville and other cities like us, buy generators to assure that that doesn't happen again. So let's see, additional generators, we also identified for communication needs during that same event, we had some problems with different communications. That was particularly from ice forming on things along with our water system. But the state's fix was the new generator system, so. So where would these generators go? We've looked across the city to find out exactly where they're needed. Our water production department needed about 16 generators, that would, mostly at different well sites. At the water treatment plant, there's also pumps at different tanks. So the majority of these are little areas that need generators, but there's also some pretty significant-sized generators in there as well. Wastewater needed eight generators, the street division needed one for the manpower and things. We actually had some power outages there during that event. We had men staying there overnight and not having a place to get warm or even have lights during the evening. So fire department, same way. City Hall, the library, City University, that's where we have our emergency O C at times. And then also the Parks Department would be receiving two generators from this grant. So what we did when we found out that we were going to have this mandate, we have talked to a couple of the grant writers, we've been using Taylor and associates, to help us kind of understand what the grant process is and how to move forward, and how do we apply for it, and what can we do to get some of this money. And so we did find out it's a multi-year grant, so if we apply for it and we don't get it this year, we'll kind of stay in the mix. And if the state funds more money, then we will be able to receive that money in the future. And get it to 25% match, and so whatever we put in for, the city would have to match it. As of right now, those generators that you have up on the screen, we've done some preliminary estimates, kind of guestimates at this time, we've actually had a little bit of help looking at it, right about that $5.7 million range. So the matching fund for the city of Kerrville would be about $1.4 million, $1.5 million for our matching funds. Once we go into the grant, we can pull back a little bit if we decide, hey, we don't want to match that much, and we figure it's better to ask for the whole piece of the pie, if you will, and then see what they offer us and see what's available to us. And with that, I will answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so the state mandated this, but didn't fund it. So we've got to come up with a funding, and this is an avenue to do that.
That's right.
Okay, but the result will be, if we have another storm like we did in February, we will be much better equipped to handle it.
For sure, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Does the tax note that we approved at some meeting prior apply to this?
It could, it could be applied to that local match portion if the city is awarded part of the grant. That resource could be utilized as part of the local match.
Okay, and can you remind me how much that tax note was for?
Eight eighty-five.
I don't have the exact number off my head, but I believe it was around $880,000.
Right, okay.
Any other questions, counsel?
I'm just curious, are generators available?
It's a good question.
Yes and no, it depends on, what size do you want? After this grant comes out, I don't know, it might be a little bit hard to get hold of, and there's gonna be about $37 million, I'm sure there's a lot more need than that across the state. So as of right now, yes, some generators are available, but they're like everything else, you know, they're, it's not, they're not sitting on the shelf all the time.
When do we find out? If we authorize this, when do we find out? Do you have a timeline?
Yeah, so I believe it's.
November.
Yeah.
Is it in there?
Yeah, I think it's a spring timeframe. November is the application deadline, and then we anticipate, hopefully, in the spring. Unfortunately, the state doesn't ever seem to move very fast on any of those pieces. As you recall, we're still waiting for results back from our community development block grant, which we applied for back in April. So, you know, we're hopeful that we may have at least a preliminary indication in the spring, but to be determined.
And just like other grants that we've applied for, so what I'm hearing is, we apply for everything that we could possibly need, we find out if we get money or not, and then if we do get money, then we actually decide exactly how and where we're going to apply it.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah, correct. You'd still have, obviously, there would be purchases that would be involved with this, and so, or in the instance of other grants we've applied for, oftentimes, construction contracts, there may be construction contracts associated with this one as well. And so anytime those are over $50,000, which the vast majority of them are, they come back to council and you guys have to authorize those.
But in general, when you're talking about grants, and I know everything, every time is different, but in a lot of cases, when you apply for a grant, if you receive that grant, when you receive that grant funding is when you make those detailed analysis decisions, right?
Correct, that's right.
So you go pie in the sky.
That's right.
Find out, and then make that decision. So what you're presenting to us tonight isn't, if we get the grant, we have to do all of this. It's, this is what we're applying for, and we're gonna see what happens.
That's right.
Right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions on that matter? All right, do I hear a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution number 45-2021.
Can I do, is there a second? Got a second? Okay, all in favor, if you raise your hand, and it passes unanimously. Okay, seven C, Ms. McLehannon.
Resolution number 46-2021, a resolution authorizing participation with the state of Texas through the Office of the Attorney General in the Texas opioid settlement, approving the Texas term sheet, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents in connection with the settlement on behalf of the city, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, Mr. Tash?
Good mor, well, I guess it's evening it. Good evening, Mayor and council members. You might have already heard that the Texas Attorney General has settled several opioid settlement lawsuits. And so this is based on those settlements that every single municipality within the state is having to address. So just for a little background, this is basically addressing two separate lawsuits that the Texas Attorney General filed. As you can see in your packet, one was against distributors and one was against manufacturers. Technically, the only manufacturer was Johnson &amp; Johnson, but they were held liable because of their subsidiary of Janssen Pharmaceutical. Based on the settlement that the Attorney General has reached here, it is estimated, and that's a very important point, this is an estimate, and this is, as you were saying, Councilwoman Clarkson, this is a pie in the sky. This is what we can hope for, but not necessarily what we can expect. It is definitive that the state is going to get $1.5 billion, but it's important to point out that that is over 18 years. And so what we're going to be getting in terms of the municipalities and the regions is going to depend on how many municipalities agree to this settlement. So that is what I mean when this, there's a Fund One and a Fund Two. The Fund One is basically direct payments to municipalities. You don't have to do anything to get them, it is just what you can expect to get if you sign on to the settlement. But once again, even though it says here that the Attorney General estimates that Kerrville could get up to $190,000, that's over 18 years, and that is only if all the municipalities within the state agree to this. And it's also important to point out that that might not happen, because several municipalities currently have their own lawsuits out there, and they might not sign on to this. Anyway, there's also Fund Two, that is just for regions. There are several regions that have been set up under the settlement agreement, and each region is going to get a lump sum. Our region, where Kerrville's gonna be in Region Six, they're gonna get up to $68 million. That is available only upon application. So you can decide to apply for funds out of that, and they are going to evaluate all the applications they get, and they can approve it. So you actually have two different sources of funds that you could get. Now, it is very important, under both these, the lump sum payment and anything you get from the region, that it does, the money has to be used for a purpose that has an opioid nexus. Because as, you know, this has come out of opioid addiction, so they don't want to make the same mistake that they made with the tobacco lawsuits and settlement. They want there to be a nexus between the receipts of this funds and the use of the fund. So as it says here, it's generally for treatment and prevention of addiction, and it has to have an opioid nexus. However, the Attorney General has basically said that they're being loose with that, so it's not only opioid addiction, it can be the health effects associated with it, it can be the mental health effects associated with it. It can be for uninsured people who need help with Narcan or counseling or anything like that. Some of the preferred uses that they've specifically pointed out, and this is only three, but they have, basically, whatever you can think of, as long as there's an opioid nexus to it, is going to be appropriate. So you can purchase Narcan, reimburse EMS for opioid responses, provide training regarding opioid use. Also, this is a very important part of it, and I think this is a very beneficial part of it, these funds don't have to be used for future expenses. You can use these funds to reimburse what the municipalities had to pay in the past, as long as you can show that the expenses that you're reimbursing have an opioid nexus. So if you do want to approve the settlement, you just need to adopt the settlement term sheet, and that's what the city council does. And then the city council, through the approval and the adoption of Resolution 46-2021, gives the city manager the authority to actually execute the settlement participation forms, and there will be two, one for the distributors lawsuit and one for the manufacturers lawsuit. Those settlement participation forms will basically mean that Kerrville will release these distributors and manufacturers from any future liability for any of Kerrville's expenses related to opioid use that can be linked to these distributors and these manufacturers. That does not mean, however, that Kerrville will not have the ability to sue these particular distributors and manufacturers if they so choose in the future, but anything that Kerrville gets from those suits will actually be deducted from anything that you get through the settlement. So with the hat, after talking with the Attorney General and reviewing things, it is the legal department's position that this is a good settlement and recommends the approval of the settlement through the council's adoption of Resolution 46-2021. So if you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a couple of questions. First off, can the money be used for a K-9 unit?
As long as you can show that there's an opioid nexus. You probably actually, if you can show that it is being used for drug interdiction or anything like that, I think you actually might have a pretty good argument.
Okay, the other question I have, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, in speaking, we actually at the TML conference spoke with some of the attorneys from Attorney General Paxton's office, and this, the committee that will be overseeing the grant portion of this funding, which is really the lion's share of the funding, has been stood up. They will be going through the process during the winter timeframe of really beginning to delve into the criteria that folks will be able to apply for, to be able to receive those grant elements. And so I think we'll know more details in the early part of '22, but it very well likely might be that we may be able to apply for part of the K-9 program.
Okay, and then the other question was, is there a benefit? You had mentioned that there were some communities that have their own lawsuits going. Is there a benefit to doing that as opposed to settling, like in a, I don't know if you would call this a class action lawsuit or what, but is there benefit to doing the individual lawsuit as opposed to the class action?
Well, I would say this, this is free money. You don't, you haven't had to spend attorney's fees in order to get this money, which you would have to spend if you choose to sue these distributors or manufacturers yourself. So from that perspective, money that you get without having to spend money to get, I think is a better idea.
Okay.
So from your conversations with the Attorney General's office, and your read of this as an assistant city attorney, you think we ought to go for this?
I think that this is a very good settlement based on the fact that we have not had to expend any resources in order to be eligible for this money or to get the direct payments.
Okay, all right. Other questions, counsel? All right, do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution number 46-2021.
I'll second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor? Let it be known by the upraised hand. Thank you, Mr. Tash. Thank you. Okay, we come now for items for future agendas. Do we have recommendations on that?
Mayor, can I just reiterate about Playhouse 2000 on the agenda for the next council meeting? They'd like to give a report.
Who, tell me who?
Jeffrey Brown with Playhouse 2000.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, sure, okay, Playhouse 2000.
I don't know, I just wanted to reiterate.
We have spoken with Mr. Brown, and right now, we are anticipating having him.
Awesome, thank you.
All right.
I would like for a future, for our next agenda, or did you, I'm sorry, did you have anything else that you wanted to?
No, I'm listening.
No, I didn't want to jump my turn.
Go ahead.
So I'd like to talk about the, I would like to have on the future agenda, I would like to start talking about forming a committee for the public safety complex with potential council appointments, so that we can start the process of working with, potentially, I talked to city manager, a firm that can help us start the process of putting together citizen committee with council appointments to start looking at the scope of the project that we have now, and I think, based on what you said, Mayor, with the idea being that we had a starting point and now we don't, it's a little, it's a little different animal that we're looking at. That being said, I would like to know how you all feel about appointing maybe two to three citizens to form a committee for the public safety complex.
Yeah, I would think.
Who else would be on it?
I would think, in order to keep it at a level where you can actually get some things done, I would say no more than two per council people for the most effective steering-type committee.
And then the rest would be citizens?
No, well, I would say council, and then as Councilmember Hughes was suggesting, council plus two council appointments each.
Oh, okay, oh, got you, I got you, yeah, yeah.
And I think two, per person, two council.
Two per person.
A per person is a good manageable number, yes.
Okay, all right.
I'd happily second that.
Okay, all right. So you're making that in the form of a motion?
So I guess my motion would be to form a committee, and at our next meeting, present our two appointments to the committee, so that we can get the committee organized and beginning that process.
So actually add it to the agenda, but have, be prepared to bring forth two community members.
It sounds like everybody feels like that's, at least I've heard from you guys.
I think two's a good number, yeah. Two or three is fine.
Yeah, yeah, okay. The, all right, so what we're, what the agenda item would be, a committee to begin to look at moving forward in the public safety complex, and two persons recommended from each council member. Plus, the whole council?
Yeah, so I was wondering, what would be like the max membership? So are you thinking we have council as a whole vote on? you thinking we have council as a whole vote on a certain amount of members, and then each council member themselves also have an additional two? No?
No.
No, it would be each council person.
Has two, that's it.
So that would be what, fifteen? If you included Mayor and council?
Yeah. Okay, it, it sounds like, well, it sounds like we, we need, we, we need to form, we're not gonna do it now, we need to form the recommendation that will come to city council at possibly the next meeting, and then it's approved or not approved, and then we move forward. Okay, Ms. Tash?
Do you want to say something? I'm a little confused.
Well, I think, I think what, what you need to do now is, cause apparently there's, there's some deliberation that y'all need to have too, so I recommend that you all, um, put the, the, um, formation of the committee on the next agenda.
Right.
And then you can, after you form it, or, you know, get, get a framework for it, we can bring back the bones, if you will, and then you all can make your appointments at a subsequent meeting.
Oh, so not until the year right now?
So it might take until November.
Yeah.
Yeah, that first meeting in November.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, I think that's good.
Well, I'll second that.
All right, but now who's got the motion?
Kim.
Don't, I'm, I'm in my motion. So I guess my motion now is that, um, I, I will move that at the next meeting, we form the committee and define the scope of the committee, but we don't wanna make appointments at that. I mean, the, the, I guess the reason I suggested that, I'll stop my motion there, but just for further dialogue, the reason I suggested that was to prevent further delay in the formation and movement of this committee.
Fine. We've got until February to decide if we're gonna do a bond election in May, but this would help us to look at what our options are. So the motion is, in the next council meeting, will be a, a resolution to form this committee, uh, to work on the public safety complex. We'll come back later with appointments. Okay?
That's fine. Um, and because I'm offering this as an item for a future agenda, can I clarify with staff, does that fall on me to bring forth that item, or will staff be able to recommend to us that resolution and what that formation looks like?
I think we can take a stab at trying to draft that resolution, and then obviously if, if you guys need to modify that within the bounds of.
Uh, that would be my preference. I, I didn't intend to, to go down that road. I appreciate staff with that.
Okay, do we, we got a motion? Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll still second that.
We got, we got a second, Mr. Garcia? Okay, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay. Anything else on future agendas?
Yeah, well, yes, um, we need to, um, Kim, where are you?
She was up there, she's in the back.
There she is. Help me with the dates, Kim. I, I think, I didn't bring my, uh, my cheat sheet. Um, is it, uh, is it the ninth?
Yes, ma'am, November ninth.
Yes, November ninth, that for the municipal judges. We need to do an evaluation. Uh, it's two years, and it's time to do that. So, uh, would recommend that, uh, we, uh, bring them in on, uh, November ninth for an evaluation of each of them separately.
Okay.
And then on December twelfth, we would make.
Fourteenth.
Or fourteenth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
Uh, we'd make the appointment.
All right. So on the ninth of November, we would do the evaluations of the municipal judges, um, and then the December fourteenth, we would come back with recommendations. Okay? All right. You make that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, all right.
We need to do this before the end of the year.
Right, no, I agree, I second.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hands? All right, okay. Any future agendas?
Uh, I would like to, we, we started with procedures and policies, and we've not finished that. Uh, I would like for us to, in the, in some time, as soon as possible, to, uh, bring forth, uh, our, our suggestions for that, and, uh, I'd like to get that tidied up and get that behind us.
All right. Are you proposing a workshop?
No, no, I think that we need to submit our suggestions.
In writing.
In writing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, uh, bring them, bring them together and, uh, and take care of that in council.
Okay, all right. Um, uh, does that require a motion?
Well, I think she wants it on the.
We want it on the, on the agenda.
Okay, all right.
On an agenda.
Okay, so, uh, council will submit in writing changes, if they have any, to our procedures, and then we will come back and present those changes in a council meeting.
Do we need dates on that, Mike?
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we get some clarification on that? That way we, council knows when we should submit them, to give us ample time to review.
So, dates, Mike?
Yeah, my thought would be it needs to be out with the agenda packet. If, if, if it goes out that Friday with the packet, whenever you want it, whenever you're wanting it on an agenda, on a, on a meeting, and then we need to be cognizant of when, as council, we need to submit that. So.
Would Monday then, like usual, when they're submitting them all on Monday, the eighth day prior to the meeting?
Yeah, be that normal eight-day deadline and advance the meeting. So if you guys just wanna pick a meeting date, that will then back into that deadline.
Yeah.
So just the next meeting, next regular meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you want?
Uh, how much do we have on the agenda? Is it something that we could handle the next meeting?
October twenty-sixth is actually pretty full.
Pretty full?
We've got a lot of development-related items on there, but I believe we're, we're here for y'all, so.
Let's go to November, November ninth.
November the ninth?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, motions made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hands. Okay. Thank you. And thank you, citizens, uh, for your involvement in this council meeting.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
I just, I had a couple too.
Okay.
Um, one is, uh, like I suggested earlier, to get some information on the dark sky and look at possibly adopting a dark sky ordinance or resolution, whichever one of those is required. And that can be, I don't know, it doesn't really matter which meeting up until January, I guess, whatever y'all, whatever staff is comfortable with at that point.
Okay, for the dark sky.
Correct.
Yeah, resolution.
Right, so I'll like support some of the, uh, citizens that came and spoke.
Okay. Well, hate to wait till January, Fredericksburg's already done it.
Well, up, up till January, if staff wants to put it up sooner, I'm happy with that too.
All right, okay. We'll do it in first meeting in January, okay?
Okay, that's fine.
All right, now, that's a motion of the dark sky resolution.
I'll second that.
Yeah, okay, we've got a motion second, and we're looking at, what do we say, first, first Tuesday, first meeting in January, okay? All right, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay.
And then, um, another one, I know a group of individuals, uh, the Christian Women's Job Car, Job Corps, who are interested in singing Christmas carols at the Tranquility Island, um, and they've actually, I think, are required, for some reason, to pay a two-hundred-dollar reservation fee and a two-hundred-dollar refundable deposit in order to do this. They're wanting just to do it and hand out hot chocolate packets and candy canes for those that come and look at the lights and then sing Christmas carols there too, probably in the next month. So my agenda item request would be to waive those fees of the reservation of the island, because they're not really reserving it. Um, waive those fees for the Christian Women's Job Corps. So if there's anyone who's interested in supporting them on that.
Mr. Hoppe, what's your read on that?
Um, the use of any type of city facility, uh, in a special event, uh, is within the fee schedule, um, and so, uh, that is, uh, you know, obviously it does have, uh, a staff burden component in regards to picking up trash and other items, and that's why council has authorized a fee to be charged on those, um, whether that's, you know, rental of Tranquility Island or otherwise. Um, but it does have an option for, uh, you know, waiver of fees.
Okay, all right. Okay, so that needs to be decided soon?
Yes, um, I would be requesting that to be on either the October twenty-sixth. There are also, there were, I think they were thinking about doing it towards the end of November around, after the, uh, hotel, uh, holiday lighted parade. So either the twenty-sixth of October or the ninth of November, I think is our next meeting.
All right, uh, so possibly again in early November?
Yes.
Okay.
So two events?
Uh, no, they're just wanting one, they're just wanting to do one. I said it's gonna be, I think, after the holiday lighted parade, just to give you a timeframe of when they're thinking about doing it.
And this is, the group is?
The Christian Women's Job Corps.
Does, when, when people want waivers, don't they take that to staff and then staff brings it to council? Isn't that the normal way it works? Or not? I mean, I know we've been asked to, to look at that before. I don't ever remember a council member putting that on an agenda, so just to clarify.
Sometimes there are requests that come in to staff.
Yeah, so it can happen either way.
I think this is, don't hold me to this, but I think it's part of the code, and so we'll get you some more information about the authority, council.
All right, okay. All right, so do we wanna vote to proceed depending on the information that you get us?
Yep. Well, I, I got a nod from, from, um, the parks director. It is, this is a component of the code, so if, if there's a request to waive, it comes to council for a decision.
Okay, all right.
I, I just, uh, so if, if, if we put it on an agenda item like, the staff, I mean, not to put anybody on the spot now, because no one would know the answer, um, I would be surprised if anyone did, but, um, how many nonprofits, um, do pay versus waive? I, I don't, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on how we treat everybody, I guess.
Yeah, certainly we have entities that utilize our park facilities all the time, uh, and they pay fees, and, and we, as staff, don't typically waive those fees, because if we waived one fee, then we waive all fees, and so, um, we have fees for a reason, and that's to help defer the cost to, to lessen the burden on taxpayers.
Right. Yeah, okay, all right. The total fee is?
The total fee would be four hundred dollars, two hundred of that is refundable deposit. There is also a special event fee, which is forty-five dollars, and that I think is acceptable. Um, it's just, the reservation fee is a two hundred, two hundred, they have to pay to the city, two hundred dollars is a refundable deposit. So that, I think, should be, is waived.
So they're asking for waiving the two hundred dollars?
Correct.
Okay, and then they would pick up the rest?
The forty-five. Correct.
Okay, all right, okay. Look, let's do it this way, okay? Um, I'm one of the founders of the Christian Men's Job Corps, I'll do the two hundred dollars, and we won't have to go through the process. Okay? Tell Tom Jones that.
Oh, it's the Christian Women's Job Corps?
Women's, well, also helped to fund that, so, uh, start at that, so I'll, I'll do that, I'll do that. Okay?
Okay, then, okay, so then I'll, I'll get in contact with the individual who contacted me.
Yeah, right, okay.
All right, thank you, then I'll waive that. Um, and then just lastly, there were clearly a lot of citizens here about the brink crossing. We got a little bit of information on that. I know that went through P&amp;Z. There were a lot of things, information that was said from them. I would like staff to be able to give council a response, give them that opportunity, because I would like them to just give us some information on that too. Just no action, just information from them.
Okay, all right. All right, we do not have need for an executive session tonight, or do we?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Does anybody want to, to extend the meeting by an executive session?
No.
All right, okay, we're adjourned.
What about that request, that last one? The break, you'll just do that? Okay, sounds good. All right, we're covered, thank you.
All right, good. Thank you, we're adjourned.